We're just gonna give it a minute for folks to join and we're just waiting to see if one more board member joins us. You're about to have to remember a whole lot of names, so this is the time of year that you can like. No, no problem. We were just talking about it, so your ears must have been ringing on your way in. We were talking about the Star Garden. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:34. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. So do we have any changes or additions or anything else on for the agenda? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda. A motion from Leslie.
Second.
And a second from Ed. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, so our first agenda item is public participation. We don't have any public here with us in person. So I know we do have a few people that are joining us virtually. So if anyone has a comment they would like to make for public participation, please feel free to type into the chat. Make sure that you just include your name and address so that that can be read at the beginning of your comment into the record, just like we would if you were here in person. We'd have you state your name and address.
I can also, we've offered to speak to, so you can let me know if you want me to have you speak.
Yep. That works too. So we'll just give it a minute or two here for any folks that would like to offer public participation. Since we only have virtual public tonight, we'll give them a minute in case anyone is very busy typing.
While we're waiting for that to come in, there's a new law for public participation for our meetings. So we'll need to talk about that, about what it looks like in the policy. But essentially, the new law states that all school boards, and we always have public participation, but they put a 30-minute requirement on it. So all boards are required to have 30 minutes of public participation. So what, and this is food for thought, what I was thinking is, we open up public participation as we always do. And then if for some reason we close it after 10 minutes, and we find that, and then we're gonna start our meeting, because we're obviously not gonna sit here for 30 minutes. And then if we find that there are other people who come after that for public participation, we could consider just opening a second session to make sure that we meet the 30-minute time limit. So just food for thought, that policy will come forward in September, but we are required not to do that. I actually don't see anything in the chat. See any hands raised?
Alright. So we'll go ahead and close public participation. Our first agenda item on the agenda tonight are the handbooks. And so hopefully the board had a chance to see Sydney's note about looking at our packets in a particular order, highlighting, you know, some changes and additions for the handbook approval. So we'll start with the family handbook. And the big thing that I'm sure, you know, everybody noted in there is that for all of the handbooks, all of the things relating to COVID-19 have been pulled out of the handbook themselves and put into an addendum, so that all of that information can be gathered together, so that it's easy to access, and it's easy if the board needs to take action on those items later on. We're not looking to change the handbook itself during the year. So we'll start with the family handbook, and anything you wanna highlight from the family handbook, Sydney?
Now you have your cover sheet of the main changes, and you did, you know, separate everything into the COVID addendum for those kind of things. So in the family handbook, I don't have anything that I like presented as this.
In the copy that was, at least in the digital for the board packet, page 44 was in there twice. Just, I don't know if this is.
As a page number?
So the page, like the actual 44, not the like.
Like the text of page 44?
Yeah.
I know there's gonna be all the cleanup of all of the changes and stuff, so. Any other questions or comments on the handbook? I loved seeing things like morning recess. I think being able to recognize and talk about some of those things that are coming back is really nice. And that was one that I was excited to see. Anything else that folks have for family handbook? Would you like us to take the votes for approval of these one by one? Alright, so we need a motion to approve the family handbook for 2022, 2023. Second, I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, so next one on the list is the staff. So staff handbook. I noticed, one thing I wasn't sure if wanted to still be in the handbook itself or in the addendum was, in classroom overview, classroom seating will be arranged to maintain brief but dispensing requirements when warranted by current protocols. I didn't know if that was something that is a handbook thing or a COVID addendum thing.
We can move it. It's either way, I think.
Is that, is that something that you would see?
In the future?
Yeah, a necessity to maintain.
Probably not.
Okay.
We can move it over to the.
Take that one out of. Some of, some of that stuff may.
And there's, we might not even need to add them into the COVID protocols, because it's probably there, and there's only some specific staff information.
Yeah, there was one in the, it's, I looked, I checked it in the classroom, in the classroom, or the COVID protocol. And I liked how it was worded, COVID protocol one, it made sense. And just in the section it was in. Then the other thing I noticed was that, I remember when we changed this, and I don't, I think we should change it to something more neutral. Page 53, the administrative assistant is referred to as he. And I remember when that was changed, when we hired Mr. Beechey. So maybe just, we need, yeah. Or we just say we refer to it as a position, because I think in a different, in the nexus, school nurse is just referred to as school nurse throughout that protocol. It's never he or she. So maybe for our school administrative assistant, it's just referred to as administrative assistant throughout that.
Did you say page 43?
53. I was wondering if we left it, but we mean Mr. Beechey would have to move back. Yeah, right. No, up a little bit. Two or three places where it says. Stripped me out of time that he has available. We'd like to be aware that he will do so, to two places in that area. Anything else for staff handbook that folks wanted to bring up? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the staff handbook for 2022, 2023. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so our next one is the COVID-19 handbook addendum.
So with this one, this one you got separately, because we were waiting for the progress monitoring committee. So we attached the minutes, so you got the minutes, and the minutes went out to the community in my letter last week. So then there are not many changes, with the exception of a discussion about accepting home tests for, for either diagnosis, initial diagnosis of COVID, or for the return, return to school with COVID. So we talked a lot about this at the progress monitoring committee, and there was not consensus on which way to go. So we propose to you, just as a starting place, that the initial diagnosis still lies with the school nurse and/or provider. And the reason for that would just be the assurance of the initial testing and tracking for Mrs. Islander. So she has to do a lot of tracking of exact days and when people can come back. And then we would open it up to accepting home tests after day five, when students return. So that seemed to be where the majority of the PMC felt comfortable in opening up to home tests. So what we would do in the case of accepting that return home test would be, if the school, it still really is dependent on Mrs. Islanders' time and the availability of our tests, if somebody needs her to do it, that she would still do it, but we would need them to make sure their kids are symptom-free and that she would do it once. If a family wants to get their own home test and test every day until the child is negative, then that's the priority to do so.
Do you mean on day five, there was something to test with Mrs. Islanders?
No, we would accept a home test at that point for return to school.
That would seem, that seems backwards to me. We, we, we know they have COVID. They're looking for, just like, this is the, I imagine, that for me, that healthcare professional or nurse, or whoever doing that test, if somebody's got nose, or whatever other small symptom they may have, I would think that's going to be accepted for that. I'm just thinking, if, you know, my daughter, for example, she wakes up at 6:30 in the morning and has a runny nose or something, you know, by, obviously, we need to make plans for the day, and we can't get a hold of Mrs. Islander until school, you know, she, she will have it, and responding emails. I think that poses a significant challenge for parents, just trying to figure out which way to go, especially for something where, the chances of having it, I guess, less than we know they have. Are they still, are they still experiencing symptoms or contagious? Personally, I think I would be more in favor of accepting home tests for symptoms, or school tests, if you wanna come back on day five.
In the minute, in the minutes, and in my own experience, though, this particular variant is not well captured by home tests early on. Like, I have a number of friends and family who had BA5 this summer and tested negative for a couple of days, had symptoms.
What, what's the difference between the test?
There is no difference. It's the same test. The difference would be in the, the way that we test. It's, right, this is something we discussed in PMC, Eagle Way up there, and you get a pretty thorough sample. And Mrs. Reed and I both had experiences this summer, students in summer program, where the parents tested at home and the students were negative. And then they came in and we tested them here to go back to summer program and were positive.
Yeah, that was more my point.
And there's.
What's, what's the sample size?
50%, but it's very small sample size.
I mean, probably two or three students?
Six.
So that, three out of six that tested.
There's also, I.
I need to do it by two. I need to do it. To, to support.
I had a, I was trying to find clarity about the piece about the symptoms, the presence of the symptoms. Because my understanding previously, and this may have changed or maybe interpreted differently, but my understanding was that if a child wakes up in the morning and presents symptoms, those symptoms have to be improving and a negative test to go to school. And so it's not only the negative test that gets them back to school. So the, the test itself is not the determining time factor. It's, it's one of the factors. So like, if there's, you know, congestion or, you know, you know, abnormal, like, and it's not part of something else that's known, that's a known factor for that child, which I like that that was included in the guidance this time. That, you know, if there's a known history of allergies or, you know, headaches related to weather or something like that, that can be kind of something that's on file with Karen. But that piece with the symptoms for me is the one that makes it a little bit different, because there isn't a, at least it hasn't been, the protocol hasn't been, the negative test gets you into school.
I, I get that. I, I, and to me, I think my problem encompassing of that is, I mean, looking at this list, it'd be, obviously, it's a judgment call. Showing the signs of improvement. I mean, I think some of these, you know, we're talking fever or vomiting, the stuff that, you know, 24 hours free. That makes sense to me. Somebody has a runny nose, to make them stay home for the day, even if they test negative, it seems seems a little tricky.
Allergies have been around. You deal with allergies.
So, so how do you deal with that? So.
So there's.
Here's my daughter, right?
So Mrs. Islander deals with those cases individually, and, you know, I've heard her say multiple times that if you have a child who has allergies, you know, does, do their symptoms get better with their allergy medication, then, you know, it's probably their allergies. If their symptoms aren't getting better with the allergy medication, then it's probably something else.
And some of those are things that have been established by pediatricians, you know, that this child has a history of, you know, headaches during low pressure, something like, you know, something like that, that's, you know, that's on file.
She has all that information.
Yeah. And I mean, the symptom list is, is, that's the same as what we've been doing for. You know, unfortunately, we don't, they haven't changed that, and I haven't heard that that's gonna change of.
No, I, I think that's fine. I'm just, you know, I think, whether it's now or whenever, we have to have some kind of plan on COVID's not going away. So how do we start to live with it? Outside of the school process. I didn't see a ton change from last year.
None of the guidance changed.
The building, people coming in.
Coming, I guess.
I thought you meant like the.
More of our, our policies.
We were pretty largely open by the end of last year, so there weren't a whole lot of changes between, you know, June and now. But the DHHS guidance hasn't changed. Dr. Chan says that he expects no changes for 22, 23. Who knows if that's the case? Because, you know, we have a new variant, we have the fall coming, and, you know, if the CDC changes guidance, who knows, if then DHHS does. So it's always gonna be a moving thing. I know that, I know that the crucial factor was diagnosing COVID and keeping the symptoms out of the building, which was why we were emphasizing, you know, we do wanna open things up, but we were emphasizing school or provider diagnosis per initial, so we can make sure that we're not letting COVID into the building. And then we would accept the home test coming back, especially because the requirement is that we come back masked for days six through 10, if you're, if you're coming back at that point if you test negative. So it's still a risk.
No, I get it. It just seems counterintuitive to me that we're allowing home tests for people that we know either have or very recently had COVID, but people that have not, who are not accepting COVID. That just doesn't, like, I don't know how to reconcile that.
And, yeah, it's not an easy decision, and we went, we spent a lot of time talking about this at the progress monitoring committee. And, you know, day five is really nebulous now, because the average, average infection is eight days, is what they're reporting now. So, but the guidance is still reading, and you can test on day five. Which, when we're trying to get kids back in the building, we did have quite a few kids last year who were maybe asymptomatic or had few symptoms, and they are negative at that time, so we can get them back in. It's just not the average length of the infection. But, you know, we could also, I mean, obviously, it's completely up to you. We could also stick to the test with Karen upon return.
If, if a family would like Karen to do the follow-up test, would that only be an option on day five?
No, the way we worded it was, we had a debate where, you know, day five doesn't really mean anything, right? So we would, if they need Karen to test, we would hope that they would choose a day where their child is actually better. You know, and they think that they can come back to school, symptoms are improving, fever-free, no vomiting for 24 hours. And then they can, you know, it doesn't matter, as long as it's after day five, then they can do a test with Karen. But it would mean that they don't, so right before, if you tested positive still on day five, which 70% of our students were doing, you have to stay out till day 10, right? So this is also opening it up to try and get kids in sooner when they test negative.
Would Karen do multiple tests for the same kid, like, so could somebody say day six, day seven? Okay, so a family, if a family wanted to do repeat testing after day five, that would be at their own.
Right.
Okay, I'm just thinking about kind of that, like, equity.
Right.
Piece.
But we'll always offer one.
Yep.
You know, and then if, you know, I know that parents might choose to test every day, and if they wanna do that, and if they go, you know, day eight winds up being negative, then we want the student back in school.
And they would come back on day nine? Or would they, could they test in the morning on?
They'd test on the morning, with a mask, for the mask.
The policy say if a student's still positive, the recommended guidance is to isolate for day ten.
I'm sorry?
Didn't, I'm just looking through the policy here. It says if a student's still positive, the recommended, the recommended guidance is to continue isolation through day ten.
That's currently what the CDC guidance is saying.
But we're not, we're saying they can come back. Let me ask a, a better question. They come in, they're positive day five, Karen gives a test. They, they're still positive. Day six, the parents give a at-home test, it's negative. You're gonna allow back in?
According to this change, yes.
I mean, it's happening all over the place.
Well, no, no, I get that, which is why I'm thoroughly confused about why we're not accepting home tests. If we're worried about the accuracy, Karen's saying they're positive, they're weathered and negative, but we're gonna accept the home test in that case. But we're not going to, when they present symptoms, to start. That, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it does, it does shift the thinking to add to try, and this is written elsewhere, and some parents have written in, like, trusting parents to be vigilant about symptoms. And, no, I don't just mean the testing. I mean, part of what we're saying here is like, for the initial day, let's say, of symptoms, technically speaking, a parent should just keep that kid home. I mean, what you're talking about is like, there's a lot of symptoms that aren't COVID, which we know about. So, and what I also hear Sydney saying is like, we really, the ideal would be for parents to test their kid, not on day five, but on the day when their symptoms are improving, which is like a whole spectrum, as far as I can see for the summer. A lot of kids are sicker longer. So it actually moves us to more of what, basically what we used to think before the pandemic. It's like, if your kid was sick, you kept them home, and they finally didn't have the symptoms, and the symptoms are improving, you send them back to school. Yeah.
I would, I would completely, I, I think, and it's more the, again, I, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna get too detailed on this, but, I mean, this list of symptoms, in my mind, yours, that is not a one-size-fall, like, they're all sort of the same symptoms. I mean, when you talk about the hospital environment, hospital, fever and chills, to me, that's a completely different set of symptoms than a kid has a runny nose or, you know, a psych.
But it presents in all those ways with.
No, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, I think, I don't have the answer, I just, I don't, I don't understand why we're fine accepting it on the back end of the.
Well, on the front, the, the initial one, if it's a negative test, they come back, no masks. If, for that second one, they're coming back masked. So even if the home test is inaccurate, they're coming back masked until day ten. So there is a layer of mitigation there that is not there in the initial. So if the first home test is not done, let's say it's a squirmy kid, and they have a hard time getting an accurate test at home with their parent. And then that one reads negative. They come back to school with no mitigation measures in place, and they may be positive. If, in the, in the return situation, if they do that home test, it says that they're negative, but they're still positive, they're coming back masked. So there's an additional mitigation layer at the return to school point that's not there on the initial day one point.
Yeah, right. Yes, but.
And they've been isolated for at least five weeks.
But we're still, we're still testing. So that's all I'm saying is, I, I'm honestly, I'm in favor of allowing home tests through on both sides, right? And that's, you know, they want, if they want Karen to do it, right? I think that's where, honestly, I think, after going through all this and talking about it, I, I think that's where I fall, is we should just accept home tests from parents.
So right now, accepting home tests for return opens up risk, and then accepting home tests for initial opens up more risk. So I think what the board needs to think about is, as we take step forward, steps forward, what's the level of risk that you wanna start opening? And we did, in talking about this, trying to figure out ways to get kids back in school faster. All of that's on the table.
So I think one of my biggest challenges, listening to this and thinking it through and seeing all the materials beforehand, is like, even compared to where we were in May or June, we know more, we've been through more, more of our kids have been infected, more of our families have been infected. And it just, I'm really struggling with our duty to do what's best for the school and our kids, and be, I guess, for lack of a better term, like protective and thoughtful. But like, the whole other rest of the world is not, like, is very casual about most of these things, right? And so I'm sitting here thinking of like, what we should do for our community, our school community and our kids, and caring for them. Then they like step out into the world, where most of the world is like double make-care, you know? And like, kids get COVID willy-nilly, and parents get COVID willy-nilly. I mean, it's just, it's like, every time we look back to these things, we're in a different kind of social place with what the world is doing. And then we have to grapple with what, how, like, our comfort level. So I, and I'm, I'm with you, because I feel like, ultimately, when I thought about this, I want kids in school as much as we can possibly get them in school. It was really. It was really hard to hear and watch, hear from parents, watch kids be out of school. It's a nice edge, like, between when they test positive and when they test negative. And I don't play, no one's to blame, but it was hard to see kids be out of school for really long stretches of time when we made them wait between five and ten, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, my point is when I think about having as many schooling kids as often as, as many kids in school as often as possible, I think that kind of tips me into like the ed thinking of like,
how would, how would doing a home test have more, have more kids in school?
Because I think at least it's the convenience of like, ed gives a scenario, right? Your kid wakes up at six-thirty and you give them a test and they have a runny nose, but they're testing negative. I myself would probably ask Karen still to do a test to be sure, but it's like the first line of defense. They would maybe do it. And we would, that whole like trust overlay of like allowing parents to manage that situation in their own home, I also think is a good step forward and like the building trusts.
I guess I just, I have trouble seeing home tests as a way to get kids into school. Because if there are symptoms there that are not, if the symptoms improve, well, and the.
Hopefully you have some, I mean.
I mean, I'm not talking, I'm not talking, you know, she can't get up and move around, she's so tired, or, you know, she's, you know, has a fever of a hundred, not a hundred, four, um, that, you know, I would test her as a, got your backpack, kid, you don't. But what I'm saying is there's some of these things where, you know, it could be, she could have been out all weekend playing around yelling at the kids and she wakes up, her throat's all expecty.
So that kind of stuff.
So that's more about the symptom though, than the test.
Right, Brittany's, Brittany is right that my logic was a little screwed up because I said one thing and then I was talking about kind of another thing. I should have been clear that I was talking more, to me, I'm leaning in the ed camp because I feel like, I would like to take that full step forward and trusting our parents to like manage their household and make them decisions.
It's, it's not so much that, you know, it's, it's more than, it's, it's more than the natural timing of things that we, we have issues on. Obviously, all these, all these systems show up at three o'clock, you know, the day four, when Karen is still here, you'd schedule something. But, you know, if it, it happens, it comes in overnight and now all of a sudden, it's seven o'clock in the morning and I need to figure out, you know, do I need childcare today, do I need to stay home? And then you have to wait till eight fifteen, eight forty-five, nine o'clock for Karen to go to the test. That stuff, especially for some of these more common symptoms that are, all these COVID.
So I guess my question is if there were symptoms present, they weren't getting better, you did a home test, would you send your kid to school?
We're talking about like the initial test.
I guess we're depending what the symptom is. I mean, again, I, if it's a faucet coming, you never know, no. But if, you know, she's a little sniffly.
Yeah, so I, I guess I feel like that conversation is more about this subjectivity of what the symptom is and not about who does the test.
But that leads to who does the test, because, you know, you have winter sprain, I think, you know, colds and everything else like that. But what I'm saying is, of all those, you know, at least some of these more mild symptoms, if the kid presents first thing in the morning, that's the majority, they're not coming to school. And to keep a kid out because they're a little sniffly or they've got a scratchy throat, because God knows what, seems a little bit extreme. We, we never did, we never did a pre-COVID. And now we've got the COVID test and Karen is administering the same exact test that I would be at home. I don't, I don't, I don't, I can't get to that loop of keeping a kid out of school for some very mild symptoms because I can't schedule a test with Karen until it's too late in the day for, you know, in the morning for me to. I have to make arrangements, I can't wait till at that time to call in. So having that ability to, you know, do a test at seven AM, get come back negative, say, okay, you know, and, and talk to her. I mean, again, and some of our kids obviously are in the shelter, but some of our older kids have a conversation, do you feel well enough to go to school? Every parent sure does that kind of stuff. But I would think it's the, it's the timing of the test that I think is more critical to parents than, and I, I think, I also, where it was, at some point in time, we have to, parents are responsible.
Like the time when we just say that, I don't feel like it's a matter of trust, but it's more of a concern of accuracy that we're concerned about. Saying in the summer program that they were fit, so they tested negative, but then when you tested, you were positive. And if that's that one layer of control of the school, then that's, that's well stacked, and it's an accurate test. That's important, I think it's important not to turn to a level of mistrust, but it doesn't at all come down to the accuracy of the test. And we know that Karen is going to do this, and we hope that other families are, if we miss, there's a positive class. I just want to bring up one other angle because it should be added to the discussion is that, whatever you decide, if we will, if we're taking more risks, that's more risk for more kids and staffing them. So just, I just want to add the angle in of how difficult it was to keep staffing the building and subs and kids being out in terms of the way we think we can try and mitigate COVID coming into the building.
Is, is there any other school in our region that is not accepting that?
Well, I was just about to pipe up and say, granted, I don't know, I haven't researched public schools because I think they're all grappling with what they're grappling with right now. But loads of private institutions are saying document your tests, take your home test ahead of time before you show up. Colleges, private schools, varying ages, so, yeah.
And I'm not saying we need to follow, I'm just, I mean, it, I, I'm, what's Lebanon? So I mean, that's another issue, we've got, you know, parents with kids in Lebanon, Lebanon, high school, middle school, right? Are they all different procedures?
I think many schools around us don't have staff that's willing to do tests.
That's the other angle, is Karen is willing to do this.
So it's not an option for those schools.
And she has, we have, we have a certificate that makes us a clinic site to be able to do this. I don't know every other school, if every other school area did that.
So many schools may not have had this conversation because it isn't even an option for them.
And other schools may be better able to handle one or two more staff outbreaks. Whereas in a small school, we're, we're in trouble if we're down.
Well, I mean, and I think we saw that in the spring, we had a couple of schools that are fairly similar sized to us that closed.
So I don't know, because like, I see, I think what's important to note is what I'm hearing is, in a bad saying, either way, like, those change of two things, because the change of having a home test isn't going to solve the seven AM, I gave my kid a negative test. It sounds like you're talking about changing doing home tests accepted and the change of the symptoms.
I don't, well, when you.
I just want to make.
Yeah, no, I'm innocent to say. To me, symptoms improvement is a very subjective, I mean, it's a measure, it is, you know, I guess a fever, yes. But I, I think my more, my biggest concern is around some of these more common elements that pop up. You know, again, fevers, vomiting and all that stuff, that's an indication that you're sick, you're, you're really sick. Sicking up that you need to stay away from people. Again, scratchy throat, runny nose, you know, psych cough, who knows what. Those are all things that we've experienced our entire lives. And it just seems to be, you know, because COVID also presents, and then all of a sudden, we're jumping through a whole bunch of other hoops, which I think rightfully so, but I would like to make those hoops as easy as possible for people. The home testing is, is a way we can do. And honestly, if we're worried about moving too many things around, I would propose that we do the home tests for the initial tested and then require a caring test to come back before the ted weeks.
That's really where you're starting the process with that.
And in that, that way, we're only changing only one item. We can see how it goes and then the other piece of it is the people coming back. We know they have COVID, so.
That would extend the timeout for some people. Because if Karen's only doing one test on the day you picked.
Which coincides with CDC guidance, right?
No, if we did what we proposed, we would be breaking away from CDC guidance.
That's what I'm saying, the, the one I just mentioned in, in light of would be reports of CDC guidance.
But I'm just thinking, if, if one of the goals is kids back in school sooner, then your change potentially would keep kids out of school for a while.
I would, I would argue that it would keep a much smaller group of kids out longer than a much larger group of kids out for sure. You're going to have more kids out because they can't access testing, it hurts keeping them home because of noses and drugs and coughs and stuff. There are the kids that are, you know, testing positive all day six. And would, you know, would have to go through until day ten.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be clear, I think what I have heard the argument is, keep, get kids back in school, keep them in school.
Right.
And so I just, I just want to be very clear that if we made that change, it would not be moving in that direction.
I mean, we can put, I'd be, I'm in favor of doing both. But, you know, if it's too much for, if, if the group feels it's too much to move at one time, to me, it's the back end that should be tested by Karen. The whole host is at least in mind, especially if you talk about the accuracy of these things and the concerns about that. I, I would really prefer the people that I know have COVID to have the accurate test compared to people that may or may not have.
You're just potentially letting more people with COVID back in school without the initial diagnosis.
If the home test does, yes. But you also have that chance with Karen. I mean, Karen's, the test that Karen's performing is not a hundred percent for them, so.
Well, the progress monitoring committee also was in favor of the initial test being taken. Just going back to my group. But again, there was not consensus.
Yeah, if we're going to change what's, what's in that, again, that.
Well, you're, you're probably going to want to go down the whole.
The whole COVID, if there's other things in that packet to look at. That clear up one of my questions, which was about the, that, if the student is still positive, the recommended guidance is continue isolating through day ten. So that was one of my questions, but that clears that up.
The only other thing that was different compared to when we closed up in June was we just put in definitions of vaccinated and up to date because kids are now eligible for boosters. So when parents are looking at the isolation and quarantine requirements and we put the definitions in there of vaccinated versus up to date. So there's a lot of cases where a student might not need to quarantine because they're up to date. And that includes the booster. So parents might think if they've gotten a series of COVID, that they're vaccinated, that that doesn't mean they have to quarantine. But we wanted to be sure that everybody knows the quarantine requirements include the boosters.
For all kids eligible?
It is all teens, is it five and a, I forget what the age limit is. For booster? For booster.
If it's been over the system since they got.
So if they're eligible for the booster and they haven't had it, then they will still have to quarantine. If, like, for example, if the household contact has COVID. Whereas otherwise, if a household contact has COVID and they are up to date, they can still come to school. Obviously, as long as they're not symptomatic. And then everything else in there is the same, and so what we closed with.
Do we have any more specific information that would be appropriate to share or useful to share about what our, like, HVAC system does or is?
We have an excellent HVAC system.
I know that that's.
We did have a presentation on it very early on.
Yeah, because I know that that's something that is like very much out there in the communication about what schools should be doing right now. That seems to be leading the articles is ventilation. So I'm wondering if it's just worth it to put like a couple bullet points in about like outlining, this is, this is what we know about our HVAC system. Because I know it's very good, but I didn't know if we had any appropriate information that could be shared in that.
Yeah, I presented it at our initial meeting two years ago, I can dig it up again. Yeah, you know, the rate of return and fresh air exchange and everything, it'll just.
That's just very, I know that's very much like a hot topic right now. And I know we have that information and I didn't know if it would be a good thing to add to this.
Do you want that in the COVID agenda? Like specifics about our HVAC?
And yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
You missed something, but I do kind of agree with L in the fact that I, you know, I've been that here, like, you know, I guess. It has to make that seven AM kind of decision. And if you are doing a responsible thing at home, you're testing and child is positive, you were saying you would definitely keep that child home that day if they tested positive, right? Right, but if they tested negative, you can go ahead and assume. I just wondered if there was something in between, like that child, that the, I don't know, flagged, you know what I mean? I guess that's about communication too between home and school. But, uh, you know, just nothing more than a note saying, Sally answers a bit of a scratch she wrote this morning, but I tested her, she was, she tested negative.
I think our parents would communicate that within society directly.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
I know if I, if I gave her a COVID test before school, I would, I would care.
With that parent, no, so, so it makes me a little feeling, a little more comfortable with thinking about that home test as being valid.
I do understand the logic, but Sydney and Brittany particularly are pointing forward that we would want that initial test to be as accurate as we could possibly get it. I do hear that. I'll just look back to my initial comment of like, just the level of risk out in the community in the world versus the level of risk inside our schools. It's just, it's a, it's hard, it's like a really tough tension. Like we can do all the right things and last spring, kind of ripped through the school with these same policies in place. It's just, it's, I know that, and I think parents are on, this is the continuum of our comfort level. It's just stretched further and further, meaning I think the parents are like, I'm over this and parents are so like, protect my kid. And you can be in both camps really, but through all that we've been through, you know, there's a tension there, right, for, I think, for all parents sending their kids out to school. There's a lot of kids and a lot of adults that have that this summer. So it's hard to know, I might feel, I'm also sitting here like, maybe the fall will be crickets. Anyway, it's a very tough tension for us to grow. I, I guess for me too, I'm just pushed into the, the, the allowing parents to test their kids in the first place because I heard so frequently through so many people, parents in our community, that that was really frustrating. And I know was, for them, it was, you know, the two variables that Kristen's highlighted, like both, that's both sets of testing. But I know that was really, really challenging for people to.
Do we, I, I think we have to acknowledge and have a conversation too if we look at that. And I, I have been and will be this parent many times into the future. I think those mornings are desperate of, like, you woke up with symptoms, everyone has to go to work. I think with the school facilitated test, it took that decision-making away to say like, we have to wait for that test to happen with Karen. And I want to just like have that conversation and acknowledge because I know that it, it will shift the, that decision-making fully to the families. That it it will shift the that decision making fully to the families. Which I totally think that we want to build that culture and have that relationship of respect and trust with our families. But we also have to know that for some families. That will be a negative test and still continuing symptoms and they'll come to school. And so I guess, like, I I am struggling with that relationship between the test and the symptoms. And I think. We have heard multiple times from our teachers that kids come to school and say, I grew up on the way here and mom told me not to tell everyone. I have. You know, my mom gave me a whole bunch of medicine to drink this morning so I could get through the school day. And I just, I think, and I have been in that position as a parent and I acknowledge like. It is awful, but I think we have to just like have that conversation to say like, how does that change that dynamic of that morning? That like seven AM, you have symptoms, but I know I can test you at home and I can just get that one thing out of the way and get you to school. Whereas currently, it's, I have to, I have to go and see Karen and have her do that test. And there's like another step in there. That I totally know puts a burden on parents. And I hear I hear that and I know that that is awful to be in that situation of. But does that step, and I don't, I don't know the answer to this, does, and I'm truly just posing the question, does that step help protect? The class, the teachers, the school? I don't know.
Yeah, you're highlighting that this is exactly the pivot point in our society, meaning to say. Before March twenty twenty. This is, this is the way we operated, meaning like there was a whole lot of variability in the system. There were parents who would send their kids when they were sick with a fever, with diarrhea, with all the things. People would send them and we would scoop them up somehow. They'd get sick at school and we would send them home. So we're getting to this place in our society where technically what's not endemic yet, but enough people have had it, kids have had it. Like we are getting to this point where I think, I will, I will speak for some parents and I don't know what, I honestly can't say which camp I'm in. I'm kind of grappling with it. There are a lot of parents who are like, it's twenty twenty two, this is how we used to be, can we get a look, can we get closer to it? So like, I, your point is exactly well put that like. This is the proximization.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would say a couple. One being that. I would, the parents are, some of the comments you said about. I question whether or not that would have been. Done if they could, if the home test were accepted in offices. And maybe I'm very naive here, but I would think if there's someone in their household, who is showing. Something was called, whatever. You would want to do that home test to make sure that the rest of the family goes out, goes to work, everything else, they're not. Spreading it yourself. Now, is every single family going to do that? No. You know that, but I, I would venture this, the vast majority of families would be like that. Yeah, I'm also a big proponent of. Parents have responsibilities and. I think oftentimes in a lot of things, we went to the school to do things that frankly the parents should be doing and providing. Um, and I just, I don't see a. I don't see it as a why.
Okay, any other conversation about the COVID addendum?
Is the school allowed to test, like the school nurse, she's allowed to test. Any time she suspects that there might be issues?
She always gets permission to test.
I do know it's always denied at the post.
Yes. And for various reasons.
What what happens in that? What happens with?
Then the student has to go home.
So that, yeah, okay.
So if they're symptomatic, the student has to go home and then they have to produce a negative test to come back. Or wait the ten days. And we do have some parents who are about to wait ten days.
Okay, so if we would like, if the board would like a change to the. Uh, piece of, it sounds like the only part of the COVID addendum that we're looking at is. Changing, sorry, just getting that open. Yep, the initial testing, that initial testing. Piece. Is that? Is that something that? The board would like to put, that someone would like to put a motion forward to change?
I'm willing to offer an amendment or change. That that first sentence we read, parents guardians can go to their own provider for testing, comma, can perform a home test, comma, or can arrange to have testing done at TBS. Strike. Second. Yeah, second sentence, which is home testing.
Do we want, if that's a change that the board supports, do we want? Is there any kind of like, is that negative home test communicated to Mrs. Islander? Is it?
I think there should be a sense of picture. I don't know if you want to be that explicit here, how that's communicated or if you want Karen to. That's right, receive it.
I think we might, and I could be wrong, and if she's, if she's watching, she can chime in. I, my hunch is that Karen will ask us to determine that. She's been very adamant that it remain as it's written here. I think this is, this is the policy that she would ask for. I think if if we change it, it will be up to us to decide what that looks like.
Can we just say confirmation?
Like a picture of the student's face. And I mean, I know you can. Technically speaking, using my daughter, I could give myself a COVID test. She's one of the symptomatic, oh, my negative COVID test.
Oh, I don't think, we have to take a picture of them in it, or do we just take a picture of the test? Having a picture of them in it says, I don't see how that does anything. Again, you can do exactly.
I mean, the whole point is like, a parent should be able to put in writing that.
Right, absolutely.
So maybe it's not simple, you know.
Just if you know.
Nancy, my daughter had a negative. I performed a rapid test at home and she tested.
Test negative.
I do think one concern that we need to talk about here is that the board has been really adamant about equity. So when you're talking about the parents who really have to get to work and can't miss work.
Yep.
Those are probably also parents who might struggle to afford a lot of home tests. There's correlation there. So I don't know if you want to think about doing something about that.
I don't know where to throw my comments, but I don't, I don't feel like I'm ready to support a change in this policy. I feel good about what it is and I understand what those ingredients.
You'll notice that what I proposed is that they can accelerate each other's testing.
I was gonna say, so that one takes a little bit of equity if they have a home test.
They just still can't go at seven AM, like you're talking about, you know, so the people who will struggle to miss work from home are the people who have to wait for Karen.
I mean, yeah, I. I mean. People cannot afford to miss work. Posted up a business, whether, you know, they should perform a test at the end. But I don't quite see an equity issue. We're given three options. Everyone has given a free test. So I. I would support what was changed, which is, she should get some.
I will say, I have been very, very torn about this. And I. Will support the, you know, the the. COVID addendum, you know, no matter which way to go on this item, I am in agreement. I think I, where I have come down is I'm in agreement with Denise, but I will say for me, it comes to. We have the opportunity to utilize an additional tool that many, many schools don't have at their disposal. And it feels. It's difficult for me to say, to see Karen willing to do this because it is not easy. And it takes up a tremendous amount of her time and her effort and for her to be willing to do this as one of those Swiss cheese layers of protection for us and to say, no, thank you to it. Um, I think is sort of that, like, that's what tips me in the direction of of wanting to keep. This policy as it is because the reason that many, many schools around us are not having this conversation is because they don't have. They don't have someone willing to do this.
We're not saying no thank you. We're saying it's an option.
Yes, you're right. You're right. I should change that. You're right.
I hear, totally hear what you're saying.
Um. And and when I think about something like, it seemed, I think it seemed silly, but when I think about something like bringing back morning recess, which is very, very exciting, but also puts. Potentially puts all the kids into a space together first thing in the morning. Um, I think about like, there's going to be a kid who just took an inaccurate test at home and is on that playground. At eight twenty in the morning, and I know that that could happen. There could be an asymptomatic. I I totally get that, but I just, I guess I see. The initial testing policy as it stands as one of those Swiss cheese layers that lets us do things like have morning recess. Or have, um, you know, families come into the building for events. Um, and so I I totally hear all of the. The reasons and it is like this impossible scale of like, it just one little thing, I keep adding a drop to each side as I think about it. Um, but knowing that we have, and and you're right, we do, we are still using, you know, offering that as a resource, so.
There'll certainly be plenty of times where we would need Karen's expertise.
Oh, yeah.
And and be in her teaming the parents' permission to to test a child. And after all we know, I mean, unless someone else knows more than I do, I don't kind of firmly believe that the day before you test positive, you're.
Oh, yeah, you're probably spreading.
You can.
Probably spreading.
Yep.
I don't think there's anything magic about that. The positive. Also, I I personally had COVID this summer and. I I felt like I was fragile contagious before I tested positive because I started to feel the symptoms. And then it took a lot more, five days. It was almost nine, 10 before I tested negative. But you're saying it, so if I was the child or the student, then I would be able to turn after day five with a mask until I just.
With a, with a, no, no.
With a.
You'd have to have a negative test.
Yeah.
Come back after day five. So you get to day five, you get a negative test and then for day six to 10, you work.
Yep.
I was hoping after five days, I was gonna. I mean, and I had very, very mild symptoms, very, but I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yep.
So that's not really going to necessarily get kids back into school, which is my point soon, sooner. As soon as they test negative, they can come back. What did you mean when you said about, it was mentioned earlier, but then they would come back with a mask?
So once they test negative. They can come back to school, but they have to wear a mask until day 10.
Okay, 10, 10.
You have through day 10, through day 10.
From when they test.
Okay, so. It sounds like Ed and Nancy and Leslie, you guys are in favor of. Changing the language to what Leslie said of their own provider for testing, a test at home with. At the, with, yeah, with written. Confirmation to.
I would, I would say that confirmation.
Right, confirmation.
Karen's not getting four thousand phone tests.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's maybe, so, I mean, I think it'd be more. And that could also lead to a confirmation.
Well, if you mean the whole thing, for initial testing, determine, determine if symptoms are from COVID. Parent guardians can go to their own provider for testing, comma, perform a rapid test at home, comma, or can arrange to have testing done at TBS on Mrs. Islander. In the case of a home test. School nurse needs written confirmation of a negative test. Otherwise, you're gonna have Karen or, I'm just, I'm just making sure kind of precisely the language. And then you would strike that sentence at this time.
If you're gonna go this route, I would like to request that you add some language that Mrs. Islander preserves the right to. Have a school test under certain circumstances. For example. Say we know that we have five kids in one of the grade three classrooms with COVID. Um, we have a student who's symptomatic, the parents say they have a home test, they're in school, they're still symptomatic. Karen would normally say you have to go, but the parents have said, no, they don't have COVID, but we have something there. I think at some point we need some way to say if that student. Definitely does or doesn't have COVID. From a provider.
Yeah, honestly, I would, given how Karen feels like this may be essential when she gets those notifications. At some point during the day, she's got all of those gates and has permission to retest.
But if the parent says no.
We can do it.
If there's something.
Isn't that what you just said?
We can't just send them home for 10 days.
Not 10 days.
If they reject a request for testing, you can't just send them home.
We can.
We're doing that.
Until, right, until their symptoms are improving. Um, but then we have, if we have no confirmation, if that was COVID or not, their symptoms could improve. But then they could come back contagious without wearing a mask.
I, I know, I totally understand where you're coming from, Sydney. I just think we're gonna. Tie ourselves in knots on this and.
Well, they refuse the test.
I mean, it's all at Karen's discretion. She's our school nurse. She's maintaining the health of our school community inside these walls, so.
I do think she has to have some discretion to say.
No, I'm I'm supporting you. I'm saying like, I'm I'm comfortable with like a sentence that's basically like. I don't know how Sydney or Brittany or Kristen might know better, like institutional language. I am a hundred percent, when there's kids in this building, that's Karen's like discretion. This says for initial testing to determine if symptoms are from COVID. Pretty precise, meaning like, it's the initial screening moment. I'm not trying to, I'm not saying this is like the be all and end all of that home test. It's just a way for our parent to screen their kid at home to decide whether to send them or don't send them to school.
So let's walk through what currently happens now, regardless of the test, say the kid shows up. Karen gets an email saying that they tested positive for COVID.
Denise, Denise.
She can request that, she can ask for permission to produce her own test.
Yeah, and they could say no.
And then right now, they would go.
Yeah, for, until they produce a negative test or stay the 10 days. But if we're saying it could be a home test and they already said they already did a home test, it's not COVID. But we have suspicion because of what's happening in that classroom, for example, maybe we have an outbreak in that classroom. I think she needs some discretion to say, or another member of the household she knows is sick or there's that bus has a certain number of COVID cases. I think she, I think you need to give her something, some discretion over saying in certain circumstances, Mrs. Islander can require. A school test or a provider test. She's not gonna do it for everybody, obviously, but I think there are certain cases that would really warrant that.
But I don't know that we can see that. There are, I know for a fact that our parents are a community who are going to say, you can't force. But I don't know that we can say that. There are, I know for a fact their parents aren't meeting or going to say, you can't force Mrs. Islander to test my kid.
And they have to stay home.
That's fine. Great, super. That's their choice. I'm just saying, the language that you said said Karen will have the discretion to require a test, which I don't think is actually what we can, I mean, I guess we could.
Karen would have the ability to offer a test. School nurse would, that test, if that's not accepted. Karen doesn't agree to that.
I mean, are we only talking about symptomatic kids? So like, would she require or request an asymptomatic kid to test it?
No, but if we have an outbreak in a classroom and we have one kid who's, did, the parents did a home test and it's negative, but that kid is coming in and sneezing and coughing.
Oh, yeah, and you're symptomatic.
But the parent said it wasn't COVID.
If we have, if we have, if we have an outbreak in a class, have we tested anyone in the class?
Yeah.
Honestly, okay, so I would, I would think in my mind, from what you're rolling out, Sydney, I would, I would like to have something in there that says, you know, this is the, make, maybe we need to make the work there. I, in my mind, I'm talking about the initial screening for a parent to decide whether a kid walks through the door. Was the kid is inside this building? That's Karen Islander's discretion of how to manage our public health. And she can send a kid home. Like, I mean, for me, it's as simple as, it's, if you send your kid to school, Karen Islander gets to decide what happens here. And if you decline a test, she asks you to, and you say no, that kid's out for the fall CDC. And I don't know if we write it all out in this initial paragraph, but I'm very supportive of what you're talking about.
Because that, that will happen.
Yeah, no, I mean, she, she should have the ability to retest people that she feels is adequate to do. The parents disagree with that, then
Kid goes home.
The kid goes home.
Has to produce a negative test within
I think at that point in time, they have to produce a negative test either through the school or, or your provider. Take the home, give me the home option to get in the door, Karen's asked for another test.
Yeah, because your kid is symptomatic.
You can climb one. That's on you. It's your decision. Now the only way back in the door is to get a provider home.
I think that would be helpful.
So I do think I agree that it has to be in
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so
So I think you're gonna have to do rewrite that whole sentence into two paragraphs, into two separate
Two sentences.
Talking two separate things.
Yes. So the initial testing paragraph, I would say, is still as my initial proposal, meaning we add the second item into that list in the first sentence, which is their own provider for testing, comma, perform a rapid test at home, comma, or can arrange to have testing done, period. Strike that at this time, home test will not be accepted. So then that initial testing paragraph is booked.
And then in, instead of home test will not be accepted, we would say in the case of a home test, the school will need written confirmation of the negative result. I wrote that one down.
And then there's, as Brenda's saying, then there should be a second paragraph that says, um,
While at school, I mean, essentially while in the building, if Karen, if the, if the parents, you know, if the parents decline a request for COVID test,
Yeah, I think the first sentence should be something like, once student, once all students are inside the Brandon Driller School building, medical decisions default to, or how do we put it? I want to say something, I know, I see Brenda shaking her head.
So I have, while in the building, Mrs. Islander has the discretion to request a school or provider test or initial diagnosis and/or return.
So we request a provider for we would never just require a mobile test.
That was the whole reason behind us getting that CLEO certificate, so that we're able to do all of that here.
Yep. When do we need to say?
We want to add this. So in between, so it'll be in here. So above, yeah, 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 in the case of a home test, the school will need written confirmation of the negative. Before a student can
And they enter the school, or enter the school grounds. Do we need to give Karen, do we need to give any detail if the parents do refuse a provider of school tests, but it can see her?
I think that what we put in is general enough, is just while in the bill, while students are in the building, Mrs. Islander has the discretion to, to request a school or provider test. Actually, it should probably be request and require in certain circumstances. Right?
We can request, can't we? We can't require, right?
Right.
So you can request it.
Or the 10 days.
And then the sentence is, you know, yeah. If that request is denied, students need to stay out for 10 days.
School provider test for the child's diagnosis and/or return, or if parents guardians refuse this request.
I don't figure out what I'm sorry to say, because I don't like that for refusing.
Yeah.
If parents guardians refuse this request, or the other way, I didn't say it, this student
Or parents choose not to, and they'll
Yeah.
Yeah. To follow CDC.
Doing a motion for that. We're down there. We're almost there. Okay, so one other question for the board on the COVID addendum. So there's a few places in here where we link to CDC's guidance, which we have every indication is going to change immediately following our meetings.
Right.
And so if we can like stretch this meeting out until, they won't do it. They'll release it at whatever time we adjourn. Are we comfortable with those things that are linking to CDC guidance if it changes? Are we comfortable with us still pointing people in that direction, not knowing what it's gonna say? Or do we feel like we need to come back and relook at this?
Well, the question is that most of our guidance follows New Hampshire DHHS guidance. And we have no indication that that will change, but we know it's based on CDC guidance, right?
CDC, and CDC site is for vaccination, which there's some, some talk that they may change some of that language.
So do we want to, instead of including like basically a PDF of the graphics that we have at the end? Do we, we could link so that if you have it, actually, if you're actually looking at the PDF of this, you could click on the link and provide the full address so that, because your point is like, this isn't
Yeah, I guess I'm in like the, the New Hampshire guidance, like the beginning of it is, it summarizes the CDC's updated isolation and quarantine guidelines. And so when those change after our meeting.
Can we just, can we say it just somewhere on there that guidance as of D H S?
So I know, so I know, like, one of the things that it's rumored is going to change is unvaccinated close contacts. Right now, our guidance says that an unvaccinated close contact has to complete an isolation period. If that changes in four hours, are, like, is that, is that a change that we want to come back to and revisit as a board? Because as a board, we have the discretion to maintain to say, like, we still want to have that isolation for unvaccinated people in place, even if the CDC changes their guidance on that. Or are we comfortable, right, or are we comfortable, do we want to wait to see what New Hampshire does, or are we comfortable as a board saying that we will follow the guidance that CDC puts forward? The, what, what they're saying, that the draft that has leaked, is that they're gonna relax distancing, which is reflected in our policy. Our policy meets what is likely to be the update. They're gonna relax that like test to stay idea of exposed students, which we've never had. So we've never required students who've been exposed to test. So that doesn't apply to us. The one that's the most likely is the eliminating the quarantine period for exposed, unvaccinated students. And there's some talk that there may be a masking piece that goes along with that. If you are an unvaccinated student who has been exposed, you won't be required to quarantine, but you will be required to mask. So before we take our vote on this, I'm just wondering if we're if we would like to like say that when we get these updated things, we're gonna come back and revisit this, or that we're gonna leave it at date of adoption, like you said, or
I would, I would for dead, but definitely. I don't think anyone's So I would leave it at, at, you know, so we should propose to add the date of adoption and then as leaving this meeting. It just, it buys us a little time if new guidance comes out or
I like having the chance to talk about it.
We can digest it, figure it out.
Something like that, that's really nice.
Yeah, we had times when we, yeah.
And right now, we're doing some of the, a little bit of a hybrid between New Hampshire and CDC, and I think we just said date of adoption and then
Okay. We should add some language that it would be the CDC and New Hampshire DHHS guidance as of eight PM on August ninth.
I did just hear from Mrs. Islander who wants to remind everybody that this is not a test to state program, which is very different. Some are symptomatic, they need to get the symptom out of the building.
Yep. Yep.
I'll emphasize that.
Very much so. Agree with that. Okay, anything else for this one? Okay, so we will need a motion to approve the COVID-19 addendum for 2022, 2023 as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
That is the first.
That was Leslie and Ed, sorry. All right, excellent. That was the big one. Thank you, guys. That was a very good and thorough conversation. I really appreciate it. Okay, our next one that we're looking at is para educator. So this is one of the new ones.
Just thank you to Mrs. Reeve who put together para educator and substitute handbook. Just because there's really nothing that wasn't already, you know, something we did in here, but it's really great to compile it all in one place. And I know that it's really helpful for our pairs and subs coming in.
Is this something that, the way that it's written, you would feel comfortable sharing with people that were interested in learning more about being in a para? I think it could be really useful for that. Because reading through it, I was like, okay, I would feel much more comfortable being like, what is that?
Or sub.
Yeah, with both of those, the para and the sub handbook. I was thinking that.
Our sub list is down to
But they're pairs.
Yes.
Any other, or any comments or questions about the para handbook? We need a motion to approve the para educator handbook for 2022, 2023. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, and our next one is the substitute handbook. Again, seems like it actually could be like a good recruiting, see here. This is scary. Any questions or comments on that one? There was a, um, this was the only other one that I saw that had a reference to distancing. But I, of course, I didn't write down throughout this. Okay. Me too.
You can just let me find it, just to, you know, we don't need to take up the time. I'll find it. Perfect.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the substitute handbook for 2022, 2023. A motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Right, and then preschool, preschool handbook. Any questions or comments on the preschool? And your contact information.
It's at the very beginning of the
Oh, I would like to put on an agenda for a future meeting this year when we're bored and looking for things to talk about at a meeting. I know how that so often, so often happens. I would love if we can do something, we never did like a official move our preschool from that sort of pilot, let's see what preschool looks like to an official, we just kind of like, let it become one. And I would love for the board to just get like a just a review from, whether it's from you or from the, the preschool staff, just saying like, here's where the program stands, here's all of those things. I would, I think that would be great for a future meeting. Because we never sort of like formally took our preschool program from pilot program to established part of what we do. Let it happen. And looking at the handbook made me think of that. Anything else for preschool handbook? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the preschool handbook for 2022, 2023. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That's handbooks. All right, next on our agenda is a proposal for additional mental health services for children and families. And there's a memo about that in our board packet.
Okay, this is a proposal, last year, you know, we had a school social worker. And this is a proposal, we do not have the social worker anymore, but from our family and staff surveys, there was still a significant response that there are needs for counseling that just aren't available generally right now with pandemic recovery, with behaviors rising that we're seeing throughout the school. So this proposal would bring in additional counseling. It's actually two days a week, so five hours, two days a week, 10 hours a week for 36 weeks. The total cost would, for the entire year, would be $36,000. And my proposal would be that we fund this. We, we knew we were gonna need additional counseling services. So we added $15,000 to the district budget. And my proposal would be that the extra $21,000 comes out of the S R three grant, which we have about $50,000 left in there. And we talked a little bit about waiting to allocate that additional $50,000 until we saw what the survey results came back and to see what 22, 23, what the priority needs were.
Just approximately two hours a day?
No, it's two days of five hours each day.
And I would think that with counseling services, so hard for people that And I would think that with counseling services so hard for people that access.
Absolutely.
This is a gift.
We hear that the waiting list right now is at least six to nine months to get in for an initial visit, so. We think that this is the, the best place right now to funnel our S R funds.
Any other? Questions or comments on that?
Just a space for this, I'm just testing if there's enough space.
We've already preserved a room just in case.
I think it's a nice step in between the social, having the social worker position and then moving forward to evaluate, like, what do we need? It's a nice like to see a different model of that, like, what could that look like? For future years, does that tell us like, we need to think about having a social worker all the time, like if. Or is this something that we could sort of like phase out as things improve? Or is this something that we need to think about bringing more fully on as part of our budget? I think it's a good step for us. All right, so we need a motion to approve the request for mental health services for twenty twenty two, twenty three.
So.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ed and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, our next agenda item is the lunch price. And we have a memo in our board packet regarding the lunch price.
So each year, I know that this is one of the board's least favorite activities in terms of voting is raising the lunch price. But we're obligated by the lunch price or the price lunch equity tool. Um, and they put the calculation on the back where you see, could actually see it. To calculate the cost that individuals are paying versus what we're being reimbursed for. So that there's equity between the federal lunch reimbursement and what families are paying. So our P L E came out to be that we should be charging lunch three dollars and thirty five cents. However, we're only allowed to increase ten cents per year. So my proposal would be that the lunch price goes up to three ten this year. And then, you know, we can just sort of start closing the gap each year. They never let you increase it more than that. But, um, we are, we're basically required to do this or it could jeopardize our, you know, our food service program.
Does the calculation, the required cost for what we choose?
Uh, not all of us, no, no. We hope that we can close the gap, but there were a few years where, um, the board voted against raising the lunch prices for various reasons. So the gap got a little wider.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're ever going to catch up or we're always going to be.
No, we hope we'll catch up.
Does this affect the, any of the other, like the snack prices or the, does it change any of those or is it just a change to?
Change to lunch and staff lunch and then also our burden contract.
Any other questions on that? All right, so we need a motion to approve the lunch price increase by ten cents. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Right, our next agenda item is the request to waive the bid process.
Yeah, so this is just verbal. Um, we are still, it's, it's a horrible time to try and move something quickly. Um, in the construction world, so we're still trying to make sure that we can do whatever we can to get that pavilion at least built. And it's, has not been an easy road. We got our shore land permit, I think it was just two weeks ago. And so, you know, we're still waiting for that permit to come in. We have the permit now. Um, I'd also like to announce, I'm very, very happy to say that. That it's, uh, Drew Edmonds is going to donate digging out the, um, the path for the pavilion. So we're extremely, and they own Branson Greenway. Um, so we're extremely excited about that. But what we're, we still have other arrangements to make in terms of finding concrete, which seems to be the hardest thing to find right now. So, uh, normally, I don't, I don't know what the ultimate cost is going to be. Uh, concrete rebar, delivery labor, those other kind of things. Normally, if anything ever goes over ten thousand dollars, we have a bid. Um, given the time sensitive nature and given that we're getting quotes wherever we can get quotes, which is the other thing between five and ten. Is that we get free quotes, I would request that the board gives me permission to waive the official bid process. Um, to see if we can just get this concrete board.
So we need a motion to approve the request to waive the bid process regarding the pavilion project.
So moved.
Second.
The motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Okay, next up is the approval of the bus routes, which made my head hurt even harder this year than it normally does.
Because we have G eight.
Correct, and also I get so stuck when I first start looking at them, because I look at six seventeen. And I just then, then distracted for the whole rest of it, thinking about. Fifteen year olds getting on a bus, six seventeen in the morning. Actually, what I think about is our four parents trying to get them to get on a bus at six seventeen. Any questions about the bus routes?
So, you know, last year in September, we had the Britain's visit us and I was trying to. Like really dig in in G six and see if it. All their concern, and I know it's not just only this is up to them, you know, they really did a nice job of articulating. Some of the real struggles that happened to be for their family, but it could be anybody in that stretch of, um, Eastman. So it does.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Yeah. Gulf center that.
It's eight twelve.
Well, and it's the way back.
Three oh three on the way back.
Six twenty nine in the morning for the middle and high school, which is what they were talking about.
And yeah, and the, the one coming home.
It's three oh three.
Was, yeah. Because it's split between those two buses now, it was hard to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all of the green toward ones used to be. The same bus, right?
Yeah.
And now that's two buses. Yeah, that took me a good, I had to get a good quarter right now. My map of Eastman.
I was, I was mostly there, I just needed to talk that one out.
Yep. I had the same. And the, if needed ones on the. New added bus, will that just be, we'll wait to see if there's requests for those stops? How will we know if we need those?
So we did not have as many survey responses to the bus signups as we would normally have. People are probably surveyed out, to be honest. So it's going to be a little bit of a wait and see if that's actually needed.
Any other questions regarding bus routes? So we need a motion to approve the bus routes for two thousand twenty two, twenty three. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Right, next up is nomination.
Uh, so we are happy to nominate our police six new art teacher is Kyrisha Fry Maddy. Be coming on board with us, we're very excited to have her.
Any questions about this nomination? We need a motion to approve the nomination of Kyrisha Fry Maddy for the position of art teacher.
So moved.
A motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. Right, next up is policies. So these are all second. Are, we've all, we've looked at all of these before, and I know some folks. Yep, thank you. Application for the ebus grant, thank you.
Yeah, so I don't know how we got chosen, but Branson is one of sixteen districts in New Hampshire. Who was selected for the first round of eligibility, just we get it. But the first round of eligibility to have a grant for e-buses. So basically what happens is if you want me to go for this. We would submit an application for e-buses, four of them through first student. And then we would go into a lottery. It's basically a federal lottery at this point. And then there would be a lot of other bridges we might need to cross if we win the lottery. Getting e-buses because we have to talk about charging stations and routes. And we'd have to work some things out with our contractor for a student. Um, because this would all have to be coordinated with them, but my. My impression is it can't hurt to just put in an application and see if we went excited. We go along with our net zero. It would be, we would have to be pretty careful about the charging stations in the future. The buses now average eighty miles on the charge and that's really right at the edge of our lab and G B S routes. So we would need to do some charging.
Any questions about?
That's bad.
It's a big bus. Lots of kids, you know, lots of.
Doesn't work.
That's cargo.
All right, so we need a motion to, um, approve the completion of the ebus grant application. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Thank you. Now policies. I know not everybody, um. Got the joy of going through all of the G policies, so if there's any that people want to, you know, pull out and look for further discussion on. We can, but the. Uh, breakdown of the, let's, actually, let's do I K B first. So I K B is the homework policy. So this would be the second reading and adoption of I K B. So any discussion around that? Hey, we need a motion for second reading and adoption of policy I K B. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, say nay. All right, so for the G, all of the G policies, so there's like a little one page kind of summary of them. Um, so we'll go through them kind of in sections of what we're doing with them. So this first section are the, these are revisions, these are policies that were current and then we revised and updated them. Um, and so we're looking to do the second reading and adoption of these. So it would be policies G B C D, G B C D dash R one, G B D, G B E B B and G B E B D. Any questions, comments about any of those? All right, so we need a motion for a second reading and adoption. We have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. All right, our next read section are, these are either new or forms that were newly attached to a policy. So these were some new, um, most of these were ones that were required or recommended. Um, and so we're looking at that second list there, if anyone has any questions or feedback. Is this, that's in this file?
Yes, there it is. Yeah, so Randy Britney went through, um, our policies and data use and just did some cross referencing. And if we want everything to align, which he pointed out. We would add the language that I passed to you just now into G B E F and G B E F dash R. Which is additions to the unacceptable use. And he said this aligns with our data governance and privacy policy in the state law, so adding this language in.
Do you need us to pull that one out? Any other questions on that section? All right, so we need a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of G A, G B C E, G B E A, G B E A A, G B E A B. G B E B, G B E F, G B E F dash R, G B G A, G B J A, G B J A dash R, G C F, G C O, G C Q C. Yep, adopt as amended. So a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, say nay. All right, and then the last section are policies that we are rescinding. So these were either outdated, no longer necessary or covered under other policies or incorporated into another policy or form. So any conversation or questions about any of those from anybody? Right, so we need a motion to, um. This would be the second. Reading and rescind. Of policies G B C D dash R one and R two, G B A, G B A A, G B A A dash R, G B E D, G C A A, G C C, G C E and G D C. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Right? Then you can flip all the way through your packet, all the way down to the principal's report.
I know I missed the.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I was listening to you on the way here about the COVID protocols and I just wanted to kind of make a comment. Uh, if you're wondering if you should test your student or not in the morning and you test them, they shouldn't be coming to school that day. Because it's not tested negative. School is testing for symptoms unless something's changed that I'm aware of. My other question is, um, that if I'm sending somebody home because they have symptoms. You were talking about either I test them or the provider tests them, but if we're accepting a home test, why can't I send them home if they have a home test?
We wrote language in there that was specific about your discretion as soon as they come in the building. So that if a student is here and has symptoms and the parent says, oh, I tested and they're negative, it's your discretion with that student in here.
So for example, we were saying, you know, if we know that there's COVID in that classroom and that student's symptomatic. And you just say, in this case, I'm requiring that either I give a test or a provider gets a test. Sorry, outside of.
And you're specific if they refuse, then they.
And do you have guidelines for home tests? Like, there's like ones that are not accessible through. So like our parents, they're going to need. What test it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any more?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the ins and outs of what tests. Qualify as what? Let's, um, look at Kristen's principal report and we'll see what we can find out and then if we want to go back to that. All right, anything you'd like to add, elaborate on?
So I just want to elaborate a little bit on the summer program. We altered it a little bit this year based on some feedback and based on the fact that we. N T S S over the school year and it was pretty amazing. So we used the N T S S model on the summer program, so it was a three hour Monday birthday program. One hour being N T S S, so kiddos were working in small groups and they were really small groups of just a few people to involve. Um, one hour of enrichment, so one week, two weeks, Mr. Pollard did steam with the kids. One week Miss Bella came in the door, one week Miss Kurt came in and did music. In one week, Mr. Matt Musiman did. And then the last hour was snack and socialization and S E L stuff and then practice, I think. And then practice, I think that it's reading and some reading aloud, we were great. So it went really well. And I think one of the neatest things was that last year in T S S, we started K through two. And this year we're moving K through six. And two of our N T S S teachers for the summer program are intermediate teachers. And they were amazed at how N T S S worked and how productive it was and how much the kids grew in that environment. So I thought that was really exciting and really worth it. Actually, I will be sure, because I have feedback, I just got it from the just week. Then you all mentioned the fours when you walked in here.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing as you walk around the building. And with a five week summer program, it is no easy beach for them to get all of the floors done. So I think they may be done a few of the next week, but they're doing some reason and short stuff. The only thing, other thing I wanted to mention was I had mentioned that the last conference of the summer I was going to was from Goodson. And I actually learned because I just feel like I don't have time to do another conference and I want to be in the building. So I wanted to make sure I was.
So the.
Sure.
Alright, so the F D A has a website with approved list of authorized to have home over the counter COVID nineteen tests. So you, the board would have to decide if you want to say that it has to be from that approved list.
Doesn't distinguish. That's something we want to add to the language of that. Addendum.
Karen seemed to feel strongly about it. I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, yeah, I think. So literally the first time I've heard that from anybody.
That's same thing.
I'm sure that exists. You know, I had this thought though that, I don't know if we want to draft something and then Karen look at it and like come back to us. You know, her, make sure that she feels comfortable with the language. Obviously, she probably feels from her.
She approved the language represented, so this is going to be very different.
Exactly. I'm trying to.
Yeah. We could. My hesitation with that is, I know there's a lot of, like, this, this meeting triggers a whole lot of updates and things that get sent and stuff. And so prolonging that puts us, could put us within striking distance of the opening. I know, like, all of these dominoes start falling as soon as this meeting ends. So I, I am hesitant to lengthen out.
We'll just do the addendum. That could be the way to just have an FDA approved test.
Yeah, and it's the addition of, like, in writing needs to be at the time of task.
And from what I can see, if it's emergency authorized, it goes on their author's list. I think wish, they don't have separate lists.
Alright, so, um, do we want a motion to amend the COVID nineteen addendum to include, under, what was that, initial testing? Was that the paragraph, was initial testing? To include that the, communication to the school will include the date, time and type of test to be, which needs to be F D A approved? Makes sense?
Are we asking the parents figure out why those are?
No, for the parents to, that it should be an F D A approved from that. Let's keep a, write a link to it.
Rather than you don't really have to add at the end, I would think it kind of get the length of the original, what we're saying, with the date, time and F D A approved test that was moved, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Same as F D A just approved.
Yeah, it's in that second paragraph when we gave Karen the description. That was in the first paragraph.
In that first part, yeah, that said. If a home test is performed, the school will need written notification, including the date, time and name of F D A approved test. Alright, so do we have a motion to amend the COVID nineteen addendum? Motion from Leslie.
Second.
Second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, so superintendent's report.
I'm just going to submit my report as written. About everything.
Perfect.
I do appreciate all the work you did to organize.
Yes. Alright, next up is our consent agenda. Do we have any comments or questions, additions, changes to the consent agenda? So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, we are going to have a non-public session tonight. It is employment matters, correct? That's what I, those are the words I use.
Ninety one, eight, three, two, and, sorry, could you do that one more time, please? Sure, ninety one, eight, three, two, and.
Okay, and so for, in terms of the meeting and Zoom and all of those things, we're not taking any votes when we come out of our non-public session. It's just a board discussion of an employment matter. And so the, what we'll do is we're just going to turn off the Zoom feed and we won't restart it at the end. And we're just going to come out of non-public to adjourn the meeting. That's all the action we're going to take when we come out. And our next meeting is September sixth and school will have started. It's wild, August thirty first, yeah, that's the day. So that's the, that's the big date that we should talk about. But other than that. Yes. Breakfast.
Breakfast, yes.
Oh.
Back to school breakfast.
Yes, yep. Do you want to organize this by email, Brenda?
I will.
Okay, Brenda's going to organize, Brenda's going to collect all of us and organize, organize this by email.
Yeah, just decide.
So that we can provide breakfast to the staff.
Let us help where we can.
Alright. So other than that, we need a motion to enter non-public under ninety one, eight, three, two, A.
So moved.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed and we take a roll call for this. So Ed, Denise.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Brittany.
Aye.
So we will enter non-public at eight thirty two.